Regular bank account could get one with the Fed, says Danielle DiMartino Booth, a former advisor at the Dallas Fed.
They would have, if you will, a checking account there at the Federal Reserve.
DiMartino Booth says that would make it easier for the government to distribute federal aid. There is a flip side, says Richard Levine, chair of the fintech and regulation practice at the law firm Nelson Mullins. The Fed would know a lot about you.
They would know exactly where you spent every digital dollar.
Levine says it would be better for consumers to keep digital dollars at traditional commercial banks that are required to protect your data. I'm Nancy Marshall Genzer for Marketplace.
When it comes to improving cybersecurity around U.S. infrastructure and inside government networks, the Biden administration has tried a few things. It's set new standards for the software the government uses. It has asked companies to take voluntary steps. And now it's promising something tougher. Here's Marketplace's Nova Sappho.
The Justice Department says it will go after government contractors whose cybersecurity standards don't measure up, and it's creating a new team that'll focus on disabling cryptocurrency networks used by cyber criminals. The department says it will sue and extract fines from contractors that don't report hacks and operate with knowingly deficient cybersecurity measures. The Justice Department says right now, most hacks are not reported to law enforcement, and it wants to change that. The department's new initiative will employ the government's significant leverage through procurement and its powers through the False Claims Act, which includes whistleblower protections. The Justice Department is also creating a new cryptocurrency enforcement team. The department says it will focus on dismantling criminal financial networks. Ransomware gangs often employ cryptocurrency as a form of payment and move money using multiple networks. Human traffickers and drug traffickers are also known to employ cryptocurrencies. I'm Nova Sappho for Marketplace.
Let's do the numbers. They are up. The FTSE in London is up 1 and 2 tenths percent. Dow, S&amp;P, and Nasdaq futures are up between 9 tenths of a percent and more than a full percent, with the Dow future up more than 300 points. The 10-year Treasury yield is also moving up this morning. It is at 1.539%.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by T. Rowe Price, offering a strategic investing approach for investors seeking to close the gap between what they've saved for retirement and what they'll need to reach their goals. T. Rowe Price, invest with confidence. And by Indeed, the full-service hiring site where businesses can attract, screen, and interview candidates all in the same place. More at indeed.com/hire. And by Avast Business, protecting small businesses from online threats, dedicated to quickly patching vulnerabilities and blocking malware so devices are kept safe at avast.com/business.
There is an idea floating around out there to get around the congressional gridlock over raising governments' debt ceiling. The thinking goes if the government needs to, the government could just raise the money it needs to pay its bills by simply printing it out of thin air, specifically creating a trillion-dollar coin made of platinum. Marketplace's Matt Levin looked into it for us.
The trillion-dollar coin idea did not come from a Nobel Prize-winning economist. It came from this guy.
I have never studied economics formally in my life.
Carlos Mucha is a lawyer in Atlanta, and he used to spend his downtime in the comment sections of econ blogs for fun. During Obama's first term, one threat in particular sucked him in. What could the Treasury Department do if Congress didn't raise the debt ceiling?
It's like guys on a blog chatting, like, who is the best, you know, left-handed pitcher of all time or something. It had no real-world application.
Here was Mucha's idea. Treasury has the power to mint money, but it can legally print only so many dollars, and coins are denominated based on what they're made of, like gold, silver, copper. Mucha spotted a loophole: platinum. A platinum coin could be worth whatever the Treasury wanted it to be.
There's no reason that tomorrow, the Secretary of the Treasury said, you know what? I want to change the denomination to $1 trillion.
Then the coin is deposited in the Treasury's bank account with the Fed, and presto, money to fund the government. Debt ceiling problem solved. Legal? Probably. But likely?
It sounds absurd, but the more you think about it, actually, the shinier it looks.
Donald Maron was on the Council of Economic Advisers during the George W. Bush administration. He says if Congress doesn't raise the debt ceiling, minting platinum coins might be better than other options, like breaking the economy.
You know, not paying Social Security, right? There's a whole bunch of people they wouldn't be able to pay.
There's debate over whether the coin game could supercharge inflation. Maron thinks the Fed could manage it. But a platinum-based solution won't exactly inspire confidence in government bonds, says Mark Zandi, an economist with Moody's.
If I were a global investor and I saw that, I'd say, hey, this is just not going to work. It's unsustainable.
Zandi says interest rates could shoot up overnight, which could spell catastrophe. So when I asked who should be on the face of a trillion-dollar platinum coin, he hesitated.
I don't know that I'd want to put anyone on that coin. I think that would be an ignominious kind of honor.
Carlos Mucha, the guy who came up with the idea, he doesn't want to be on it either. I'm Matt Levin for Marketplace.
And I'm Subri Benashur with the Marketplace Morning Report. From 8 p.m., American Public Media.
Support for Radio IQ comes from the Virginia Education Association, the men and women working in Virginia's public schools, VEA, Teaching, Learning, Leading, online at veanea.org, and Kubota &amp; Beverage Tractor, a full-line Kubota dealer.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Beautiful rainy day.
Yes, it is.
I am going to call to order our October 7, 9 a.m. This is our informal session, and I will ask our clerk, Madam Susie McCoy, to call the roll, please.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Best Bitch will be absent, and Mayor Lee will be absent.
And a quorum is present. Most of you may know, or may not know, that the mayor's wife passed away this Saturday, and I would like to ask all of you and the rest of our residents in this city to just have a moment of silence for the mayor and his family, letting him know that they are in our thoughts and our prayers, and we will continue to pray for him during this difficult time. We will begin. Thank you. This morning's meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3, following the 2 p.m. session on Friday, October 8 at 7 p.m., and again on Sunday, September 10 at 4 p.m., and also video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronochva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. And our first item is going to be adoption of a resolution. I need a motion.
Move the resolution.
Clerk, I will ask you to read the title paragraph.
A resolution confirming the changing of the date for the regular meeting of City Council from 9 a.m. and 2 p.m. on Monday, October 4, 2021, to 9 a.m. and 2 p.m. on Thursday, October 7, 2021.
Thank you. And before we have any discussion, I would like to call on our city attorney to explain this resolution a little further.
Just real quickly, Madam Vice Mayor, I was informed by the clerk after our last meeting that we needed to move the meeting, looked at various ways that that might be able to be accomplished, and in order to try to do this in a manner that was least disruptive to City Council, yet also transparent to the public. We moved the meeting here and asked for this resolution. I have made an additional change to the resolution at the request of Councilmember Moon, to include within the body of the resolution itself, be it resolved, the actual location. We did not change the location of council meeting, just this. And having conferred with FOIA Council, we believe that this conforms with both the Freedom of Information Act, as well as with adoption of this resolution, will conform with our city code.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from any other members of council? Hearing non-ala asks our clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye, and the resolution passes. We have a communication from Vice Mayor Patricia Whiteboy requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. A list of current vacancies is included with the agenda for this meeting. I need a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye, and the motion passes. We also have a communication from our city manager requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the disposition of city-owned property located in northwest quadrant of the city, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3, Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye, and the motion passes. We also have a communication from the city manager requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the disposition of city-owned property located in the Williamson Road area, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3, Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye, and the motion passes. There are items listed on the 2 p.m. council docket requiring discussion or clarification, additions or deletions to the 2 p agenda. There are corrections or deletions to the 2 p agenda? Yeah, okay. I am now going to call on our city manager. Mr. Cowell, are you ready to bring forward our briefings?
We are, thank you. We actually have two briefings today. We'll do one this morning and then one at the meeting this afternoon.
Okay.
The first briefing is on downtown stormwater management or flooding, depending probably on your perspective as we go through. And just to set the stage for this, council will recall, obviously, at the formation of the Stormwater Utility, of course, there were a large number, and still remain a large number, of projects that are in need of attention relative to stormwater management. One of the most significant, of course, is associated with management of stormwater and flooding in our downtown area. Understandably, because of the magnitude of that project, it required much more in-depth analysis and study. And so that work has been completed, and so we wanted to share that work with you, also share, of course, with you, as we have alluded to previously, the significance of what it would take to really even begin to address that. So that'll be at kind of the end of this, and then certainly we'll open it up for questions as we go forward. But Ian and Marcus with the Stormwater Division will be doing the presentation, and we're ready to get started.
Thank you.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, members of council.
Good morning.
So as Bob stated, we're here to talk a little bit about flooding in downtown and some of the work we do over the last few years to look at options to help reduce flooding. So this morning, we'll do a little bit of an introduction, just what's going on in downtown, why do we see the flooding, and what are we looking at? And we're talking about downtown flooding. Marcus will be going through some of the proposed solutions that our work has come up with, and then we'll wrap up with some summary of where that looks like from a timing and budgetary standpoint. So first of all, at a high level, really what we're talking about is we want to make sure we're maximizing the resilience of downtown Roanoke. So we want to look at how can we reduce the frequency of flooding? How can we reduce the risk of flooding to downtown property owners and residents? And at the same time, we also want to make sure we're still keeping downtown, we're maintaining its character. We want to make sure it's still a fun place for people to go, it has vibrant street activity, just the things that really make downtown what it is. We want to make sure those things don't get affected if we do start doing any kind of large-scale infrastructure projects to help reduce or mitigate some of the flooding in the downtown area. So a little bit, so why do we see flooding in downtown? I guess most of you probably know, downtown is built over a former salt marsh, and we have two streams in the area. We have a lick run that flows, anyway, it kind of flows from the airport area down along the 581 corridor into the eastern part of downtown. And more importantly, we have Trout Run, which starts in the Harrison and Gilmer neighborhoods, and then flows down along the railroad tracks by the Coca-Cola plant, and then goes underground and actually flows underneath downtown in a series of tunnels that were built at the beginning of the 20th century, so over 100 years old. And there's also a lot of surface runoff from the West End neighborhood, the south part of downtown, the edge of Old Southwest. It all gets into the storm drain system and then flows downhill into downtown. All that water converges under downtown, and that's why we see some of the flooding issues that pop up from time to time. So looking a little bit at the history of flooding in downtown, so I guess, as most of you know, flood of '85 is the big flood event, and we did see flooding in downtown, certainly with that event. And one of the things with the downtown flooding is we had an initial flood event where the waters rose due to the water runoff and Trout Run, that water quickly getting into downtown. Waters then began to drop, and then a little while later was the Roanoke River rose, actually we had more flooding come back into downtown as the Roanoke River then backed up into downtown. So we have two kinds of combinations of flooding. There is the quick flooding that we see from Lick Run and Trout Run, and then there's a potential for some long-term flooding, or at least a little bit longer term, if the Roanoke River itself really backs up and we get a big flood condition from the Roanoke River. So that was the flood of '85, and then we've also had several more recent flood events. We had three events in the summer of 2016, one in 2017, we had a couple in 2018, had a break for a few weeks, and then, as you all know, back at the end of August, we had another relatively small flooding event in downtown. And the thing with that, so in that five-year period, we actually had one storm that had a 50-year type of rainfall intensity, three storms that were at a 25-year intensity, one storm at a 15-year intensity, and one storm at a 10-year intensity. So that sounds like an awful lot of heavy rain for a five-year period. But part of that, I mean, it is the unpredictable nature of flooding. You just never know when a flood is going to occur. You can statistically say one thing should happen, but, you know, nature doesn't follow statistics. And then the others you have with potential for climate change, one of the factors there is more intense rainfall events. So it seemed like this pattern is something that we need to kind of get used to as far as what we're likely to see in the valley, and how do we plan for that? So really, we're talking about how do we mitigate the impacts of some of these smaller flood events? You get a big, huge flood of '85, you can't necessarily engineer your way out of something of that magnitude, but how do we address some of these smaller type of flood events that we've seen over the last five years? So some of the things that we've been doing to get ready for how to solve those problems is, in 2017, the Stormwater Division, we did a lot of work, really trying to delineate the exact details of the drainage system under downtown, how the streams flow and work together. You know, working with Marcus, we worked in Virginia Tech, we did a lot of hydraulic monitoring, had sensors in the tunnels underneath downtown, so when it rained, we could see how quickly the water levels are coming up and down. And that allowed us to build then a very detailed hydraulic model of how water flows from Trout Run, Lick Run, and through the tunnels in downtown. That lets us, with a hydraulic model, lets us then predict if we add a certain amount of detention, if we change the piping configurations, what does that do to the flow through downtown? So that's very important for us to have that model, so we can figure out what projects make the most sense. Some other, another project that we've been working on for the last couple of years is knowing that we have these really kind of flashy floods in downtown. Is there a way that we can help predict those better for business owners, so if there's an opportunity to, you know, install flood gates or things like that to at least mitigate some individual property risk? And that's very much a work in progress at this point. But the big thing with this work has allowed us to work on this preliminary engineering report to come up with concept plans for a few projects that can have a real benefit to downtown and helping to reduce the impacts of flooding. And that's what Marcus will talk about here today, and he'll also talk a little bit about some ongoing floodplain mapping and economic analysis we're doing to help figure out the cost-benefit of some of these projects. So if that allows, turn things over to Marcus to talk about the exact engineering results we have.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everyone. My name is Marcus Aguilar. I'm a senior engineer in the Stormwater Division. I have a couple of additional introductory slides, and then we'll look at some projects that are planned out to address flooding in the Central Business District, and then I'll hand it over to Ian again, and he'll close this out. So what I'm going to show you here on this slide is the present state of the FEMA-designated floodplain in our downtown area. One thing that you'll notice here is the sort of pink-purple Zone A area, that's what FEMA designates as the 1% or 100-year floodplain in the CBD. The maps that they have presently are pretty old. They weren't done using a very precise or sophisticated hydraulic model, and so it's a little bit of a broad brushstroke delineation. Several years ago, we started, we sort of understood that it wasn't precise enough, and staff began working on getting a higher level of precision around where flooding actually occurs in the Central Business District. I'm going to take a quick side road here, and just for your awareness, let you know that FEMA is working on updating the flood maps in the entire Upper Roanoke River Basin currently. Trout Run is one of those, is one of those streams that they'll be working on. So they're actually, as I understand it, they'll be taking some of the hydraulic modeling that we've done and using it for the remapping of the FEMA floodplain here in Trout Run, but then also along the Roanoke River. Okay, so let me move to the next slide here. This is what the output of our hydraulic model looks like for the same flood in downtown. And so, as Ian mentioned, a lot of the work that we're doing is really centered around the use of this model as a tool to evaluate where does flooding occur under existing or baseline conditions, and where is it likely to occur if we put different types of infrastructure around downtown and the periphery of downtown? The very nice thing about this model is it gives us a higher level of detail as to flood depths and flood areas. So you can see it actually looks quite a bit different from what the FEMA maps show. The two, or a couple pieces of information to draw from this, we would expect that the forthcoming floodplain maps are going to look different than what we presently see in our FEMA maps, so that's one piece of information. The second is that we now have this level of information that was previously unavailable to us. So we now know at given buildings and a given statistical rainfall, what sort of flood depths we should expect. It also allows us to evaluate, as Ian said, from a cost-benefit standpoint, which pieces of infrastructure provide us the highest level of cost-benefit in terms of flood mitigation in the Central Business District. The other piece of information that this type of modeling allows us to do is start looking at economic analysis. And so what we did is we looked at the value of the structures downtown. So there's 301 structures that those floodwaters will actually touch per the model. The total assessed value of those structures per our real estate GIS is 648 million, and there's actually a method that FEMA has to estimate the value of the contents. It's very approximate, but we estimate that at 78 million. So the total sort of contents and building value of those 301 buildings downtown, 726 million dollars, okay? Remember that we're talking about very tall structures, so multi-story buildings. Flooding in the Central Business District is only going to affect that first floor. It's not going to affect second floor or higher. So that's one piece of information to understand. The model allows us to estimate risk associated with flood damages over long planning horizons. So what we've done is looked at a 50-year planning horizon and estimated that the risk associated with structure and contents damages in the CBD is about 116M, okay? So as a percentage of the overall, you know, value of buildings and contents in the CBD, it's, you know, roughly 16%. So we're not talking about maybe catastrophic losses, but certainly not inconsequential, right? And so the picture that I'm trying to paint here is that there is a cost associated with the do-nothing option, right? The existing risk in the CBD is, it's not a total loss, but it's also meaningful, it's consequential. And what I haven't factored into this analysis is the psychological impacts of flooding, you know, business closures, vehicle damages, citizens, you know, talking about how they don't want to go or work downtown, or those sorts of things. You can't monetize them, really. That's not accounted for in that 116M estimate. Okay, so now that I've painted the picture, let me talk about some proposed solutions. The two, I'm organizing the proposed sort of strategies to address this into two different big headings. The first is bigger-scale community infrastructure, and the second is really focused on property owner mitigation, so that's more smaller scale. So when we talk about big-scale community infrastructure, the goal is always to reduce or mitigate flooding. You can't ever totally eliminate flooding because it's, you know, as Ian said, it's nature. Sometimes you get the flood that you just couldn't engineer for, right? In any case, strategy number one is really focused on designing larger-scale, capital-intensive, long-term projects to mitigate that flood risk that I showed you, that 116M, over long, long-time periods. Strategy number two is, again, more focused on the property owners and tenants themselves. So that would be retrofitting structures to flood-proof against, you know, some of these floods, and also elevating contents if it's possible to do so. I'll talk about each of these strategies independently in the next slides. So let's start with the community flood mitigation projects. The way that this worked is we engaged a consultant, A. Morton Thomas, out of Richmond, Virginia, to help us narrow down the community infrastructure projects that would provide the highest cost-benefit, using that hydraulic model as the basis for our decision-making. We started with 50 sort of brainstorm topics. So, you know, what could we do to fix this issue? And slowly, with their support, narrowed that down to 14, using some high-level sort of professional judgment, engineering-type things. And then we converged those 14 options down to six options that we actually put into the hydraulic model. So we have a list of recommended projects, and I'll show you those on the next couple slides, but let me organize those projects again into some categories. So the first is conveyance. We understand that the water that falls immediately on the core of the CBD, we have to evacuate that water as quickly as possible. And there, in its present condition, the tunnels underneath town, in certain places, are too small, so there's two projects proposed to actually improve the conveyance of stormwater out of the Central Business District. Second type of project is storage. The theory here is that we would impound or attenuate water upstream or on the periphery of the Central Business District to allow the water that falls in the core to be released as quickly as possible, and then the upstream water, we release at a controlled rate more slowly. So we're calling those storage projects. We have several of those. And then the third type of projects, which is oft forgotten about in the infrastructure world, is maintenance. So we're proposing some maintenance vaults to improve our ability to take care of the tunnel system and this infrastructure over the lifecycle of it, so we can sort of provide the highest level of benefits over these 50-year and longer planning horizons. The estimated cost to deliver this infrastructure for the six projects that I described, and so this includes survey, permitting, design, construction, land if it's necessary to do that, we're estimating it 44 million. But we also understand that in addition to those six projects that we've sort of specifically identified, that we still need an additional 15 to 20-acre footprint for flood storage. And that's important, right? We have too much water that's actually coming into town from the periphery, and so we understand from this study that in addition to those six projects, we need this additional storage. The estimated cost of that is 35 to 40M. And so, to summarize, we're proposing seven total community flood mitigation projects, estimated at between 80 and 85 million. On the slide, I have 25 years. Let me talk quickly about timelines. So the smaller projects, realistically, we could fund out of stormwater revenue and its existing state and the, you know, sort of the increases over the next couple of years. But the larger-scale projects, there's obvious capital issues associated with that, right? We don't have the sort of the capital amount to be able to fund these larger projects. So again, I'm scheduling 25 years there, but that's really probably an optimistic estimate. We're talking about at least a couple decades to actually be able to deliver these projects and get them in the ground. Okay, so here's a map of the proposed projects, and again, the consultant supported us in terms of brainstorming the ideas and giving us some concept engineering drawings. And so we haven't had conversations with stakeholders or neighborhoods around these. These are basically just engineering ideas. This is the sort of, from the engineer's perspective, how you address the issue with the most effective in terms of cost, right? And so the conveyance projects that I mentioned, those are the first two on your screen. There's a small L-shaped tunnel at the intersection of First and Salem. We understand that to be that sort of the epicenter of flooding in downtown, and the plan there is to actually reroute flooding around that. And the plan there is to actually reroute flooding around that area more efficiently. We actually have plans to schedule that one out here in the coming years. I'll show you a more specific slide in a second. The second project is a diversion tunnel along Shenandoah Avenue. I have a, a specific slide for that one as well. Total cost of conveyance work is about 6, 6 million, so 5.9M as I'm showing here on the screen. Next type of project is a storage project. So I've got three projects on the screen, 33.9 million. You can see that, again, that they're on the periphery of town to store the water up slope of, of, you know, preventing it from getting into the central business district or slowing it down before it gets there. I'll show you one of those three projects, the one that's probably the most mature in terms of staff conversations. And then, as I mentioned, we'll need the additional 15 to 20 acres of flood storage that we haven't, you know, specifically identified as to where it would go at a cost of 35 to 40 million. So that falls into the category of storage projects. And then finally, the maintenance projects. You can see those little red dots around the screen. Those are actually very large access vaults to be able to allow us to get down into the, into the system safely, confined space access and traffic control and so on and so forth. So I'll show you a couple of slides of specific projects. This is just a subset, but these are the ones that, as I mentioned, we're sort of the, the most mature on in terms of staff conversations. So this is the proposed L-tunnel at the intersection of First and Salem. The idea is that we would improve conveyance at this intersection. This project is slated for fiscal year 2324 at an estimated cost of 1.4M. Again, it's realistic that the stormwater's existing utility fee could, could fund this project. And so that's why we're able to, to sort of have it on our, on our existing schedule. Second project, again, that is a, it's a diversion tunnel. It's a conveyance project that, that the plan is to, is to take water that flows in from the northwest instead of allowing it to, to reach the First and Salem intersection and, and create pressures underneath that warehouse row area. We're actually going to capture it at Shenandoah and Center, divert it down Shenandoah and, and tie it back into the downtown tunnels a little bit further downstream. Larger project, estimated at four and a half million. We would ideally like to leverage some sort of external funding for this one because of the cost. And it's, it's slated for a few more years out because there's some engineering questions that we have to answer about the, the way that we're actually going to connect it to our existing tunnel system. We haven't fully gotten through the preliminary engineering on this one. The third one that I'll show you, the, sort of the strategy is a corridor of green infrastructure along Ninth, Tenth and Campbell, so the Campbell Avenue corridor. There's some existing localized flooding that occurs in that area. And so this project would address some of that in addition to providing storage, flood storage to, to keep waters from, from reaching the central business district. I have some sort of photographs there to kind of stir your imagination as to what that would look like. It's an expensive project, nine and a half million because green infrastructure is relatively costly to, to deliver per unit. And, and so we, we have this one scheduled a couple of years out. I think this one is, is one that we could actually break up into smaller constituent pieces and, and build a little bit at a time as we go. And so that's why I think this one is more realistic inside, again, of the realm of the existing stormwater utility fee and our capital outlay. Okay, so now I'm going to change gears. We're, we're now sort of stepping away from the big-scale community infrastructure projects and we're, we're going into, you know, buildings themselves and protecting these structures and their contents against flooding. So the reason why we're wanting to go down this road is because we have that higher level of information that's now available to us. We understand, you know, where, how deep is the water going to get with a given return period flood? So the, you know, the 100-year flood or the 10-year flood, different flood depths for each of them. And it allows us to do some, again, some more specific cost-benefit analysis to support building owners and tenants. So if they have the idea of installing some sort of dry floodproofing as what you're seeing on there, on the screen, for example, it's costly to do that, right? It's, you know, it, it costs, you know, however many thousands of dollars to install that. But we now have the information to, to share with them and say, look, you should, you should build this up to this high to protect, protect your structure against this much risk over, you know, whatever your sort of planning horizon might be for that. So there's structural floodproofing like what you see on the screen. And there's also the ability to elevate contents if it's feasible to do so in, in different, in different buildings downtown. And then the other piece of information, as Ian mentioned earlier, is that the, the modeling and some of the sensor work that we've done around town has allowed us to experiment at least with, with, with an early flood warning system for town. The real problem here is that the, between the time that the rain starts falling and the time that the flooding starts happening, we're talking about five minutes maybe, right? So the response time is very, very fast. And, and it creates a, a technology and an operational challenge to be, actually be able to, to build a flood warning system that becomes useful for us. It's definitely worth us experimenting with and we're trying to do that. But I would definitely say that that's in the, in its early stages. In terms of projects, that's all that I have for you all this morning. I appreciate your, your time and I'm going to hand it over to Ian to close us off.
Thank you, Marcus.
Yeah, so just to wrap up a little bit, again, the, if we don't do anything, there is 116 million dollar risk of damage in downtown. So that's kind of our, our base point for our analysis. So we are looking at, yeah, measures we can do to reduce impact. So as Marcus just went through, we have roughly 80 to 85 million dollars in, you know, public infrastructure, these community infrastructure projects we can look at to help reduce the frequency of flooding in downtown. And then there's also strategies that individual property owners can look at to reduce the risk of flood damage on their particular properties. And that's a little bit more to be determined because that just depends on the nature of the building. A lot of more recent buildings that have been built or renovated likely already have flood protection measures built into them. Older buildings would likely need some adaption. But then, you know, a lot of that's variable depending on the structure of the building, how it's built and whatnot. So that's a, that's a hard number to really say what that cost would be for individual property owners. But that's, again, a lot of that can be voluntary based on the property owner, the, the state of their building and whatnot. But I guess, getting back to, you know, so what can the city do? And really what we're looking at is the, the funding and timing and some of the challenges that that presents for us. If we talk back in the spring, with our current utility rate structure, we're looking at having roughly $3 million in bond funding each year, half a million dollars of capital or, you know, kind of cash going into projects, leveraging that with bond funding and hopefully having about $5 million a year to work on projects. And at this point, we already have roughly 200 neighborhood drainage projects that have a price tag of roughly 140 million dollars. We have another chunk of water quality projects we're obligated to do for our Clean Water Act compliance. And those have a, an estimated cost of approximately 85 million dollars. We already have about 250 million dollar backlog of existing projects, plus these projects in downtown that we know, you know, we need to look at as if we want to have a resilient and vibrant downtown going forward. So Marcus has noted, we do have the two conveyance projects. Those are the two relatively small projects. We do have those, are in our current capital improvement program. We are looking at funding that Salem and First L-tunnel with utility funds. And we just submitted a grant proposal for VDOT revenue sharing for the money to do the Salem tunnels. And that would be in, that money would be available, assuming it's going to be awarded, that would be available in FY '27, '28. So the next six to eight years, we'd be looking at implementing those two conveyance projects to get the pinch points or bottlenecks out of the existing pipe system in downtown. And then we, what we're likely looking at, as Marcus noted, is some of the smaller green infrastructure storage problems, looking at that on an incremental basis. So we've got those West End-Campbell projects at nine and a half million. We do have a VDOT revenue sharing proposal in that would set us up for half-city, half-VDOT for about 4.5 million dollars, so about half of that project for FY '27, '28. So the first of the small drainage projects, you know, that's in the capital improvement program, something that we're looking at again next six to eight years. With our current funding model, if this smaller drainage project, we're really looking at kind of nibbling away at those over, you know, like Marcus is saying, that might be, you know, a 20-year horizon for trying to work those projects in with our existing, you know, other water quality and neighborhood drainage projects. And the big challenge we run into is this couple of larger projects. So there's the retention project that, you know, potentially could work on some of the Norfolk Southern property. And then the other yet-to-be-determined larger drainage project. And knowing that those are in that 40 million dollar range. And if we have a, you know, kind of a $5 million a year potential budget, you know, how do we work in those 40 million big projects? So that's really still what we're looking at is both, you know, kind of where can those projects fit? What's the funding strategy to try to make those work? What type of grant funds are available? And that's sort of the, the big piece of that downtown flooding puzzle that we're still working on. Saying this, as we kind of refine what those options may be, that's certainly something we would have to have then further discussion as far as, you know, how that, that financing strategy could work. But anyway, so we definitely have a plan. We are implementing some things over the next six to eight years, starting to take some steps forward. And I think with that, we'll just open up any questions for Marcus and I.
Thank you, Ian and Marcus. I will.
I just wanted to add, in fact, just add one more. I won't, I won't put a finer point on the challenges with the timing and the cost. That's obvious. I think that's been well-covered. I did want to mention, and I can't recall, the design storm for the proposed improvements is... So goes back to the point Marcus made, which is you can't control all flooding. So if you look at the 1985 flood and associate that with the 1% or the 100-year flood, if a night, even after all these improvements, if we were able to do these improvements and you get a flood like that, you will still experience flooding in downtown. Anything over that 25-year storm event, even with these in place, would still continue to, to cause flooding. So this is really trying to get at improvements that would impact the majority of times that certain types of rainfalls occur. But catastrophic storms would still result in, in flooding even after this investment. So I just want to make certain that that's understood, that even as significant as these are, there are still flooding events that will likely occur, or rain events that will likely occur, that will continue to cause flooding. But hopefully, the more common ones would be controlled through projects like these. Just wanted to, just wanted to add that point. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any of them? I'll go with Mr. Cobb.
Thank you. Thank you, Ian and Marcus. Couple of questions. Can you talk a little bit, I know that you did a good job of summarizing the history of some of the flooding events and challenges we've had downtown. And, and I would add that those affected areas outside of downtown as well. Can you talk a little bit about efforts that have been kind of ongoing in terms of mitigation? Because it seems to me, and, and correct me if, if I'm wrong in this, but it seems to me that we've not had as severe flooding downtown in recent years, unless it's been more of a flash flood impact. Are, are there current mitigation efforts that, that the department's been working on through the years to, to see a reduction in flooding downtown? Or is that just my perception?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've done some outreach with property owners about risk and, you know, ability to do some kinds of floodproofing. And there's maybe been says, properties been redeveloped, they probably do have some better building materials and things of that nature. But yeah, from a, a large infrastructure perspective, we have not done any projects. I think it's more just the variability of just we have, you know, we had a, I guess, what, you know, I could say, I guess we've been lucky as far as not having a, you know, those highly intense thunderstorms between 2018 and, and 2021.
So that conveys the urgency of this in part.
Correct. Yes, it's a challenge of predicting, yeah, flooding exactly, yeah.
Right. Do we have any idea what the impacts will be once we begin doing this work? What the impacts may be during the construction or infrastructure construction phase on downtown businesses, on traffic flows, on anything that might be what citizens or, or residents, you know, we have a lot more residents downtown than we used to have. What do you anticipate are some of those disturbances? And how can we best prepare the downtown community and the city for not only the work, the essential work that needs to happen, but how they can best be prepared for that during the time of construction?
Yeah, so at this point, we've, we've talked with Tina Workman at Downtown Roanoke. And that's about the extent, knowing that these projects are still several years off. But yeah, you're exactly right. As we get closer, we definitely need to make sure we're talking with businesses about, you know, time of year, time of day we work. Particularly knowing there's a lot of events downtown, particularly talking about some of these projects along Jefferson Street, which is a parade route. So just, yeah, being really cognizant of the various impacts, whether it's the events or, you know, a resident or a business owner. I think that's, we get to, we, one of the questions too, as we get into this further about the funding is, you know, if we do projects incrementally, they're small, but we're, we're, you know, disturbing downtown over and over and over again. So is it better to do projects incrementally and every couple of years we're doing something? Or, you know, is it better to do some, you know, some big chunks of work and just kind of disturb it once? And that's something that, you know, we would need to look at too, is just, you know, is it better to have a few big disturbances or, you know, more smaller ones? So I think there's a number of variables like that as we get further into fleshing the projects that we definitely need to be, you know, taking into account and making sure we're talking with Downtown Roanoke and the other stakeholders in downtown.
A side effect question is, with the flooding that we have had downtown, are we seeing increased erosion in some of the roads? And, and is there a plan kind of alongside to address that? And I'm talking about road surface because I know that the intensity of water, there is an erosion impact. Are we aware of what those impacts are and how, in terms of our other infrastructure dollars, we can make sure that we're, we're addressing those as well?
Yeah, I think within downtown, I don't know there's specific, I mean, if you're saying anytime it floods, I mean, there's potential for that, you know, the pavement to be damaged. I don't know that there is anything that's, you know, particularly alarming at this point. But yeah, I guess this goes back to, you know, just making, I guess the overall importance of drainage problems in general is, you know, whether it's property damage or damage to our own infrastructure, that we need to make sure we're looking at that and taking appropriate measures and not just fix it, but then maintain it over time.
Two questions, two more questions now will be done. During this effort, when we, when you talk about these kind of three streams or waterways converging downtown, we have people that live throughout the city that experience flooding in lots of different areas, not just downtown. Are there practical things and affordable things or incentive-based programs that property owners can invest in with their properties, but that neighborhoods can invest in? And my thought process behind this is, as we're looking at updating our neighborhood plans, is there an aspect of that can, that can address environmental impact as well as flooding impact? And, and how the neighborhoods can incorporate those efforts in their plans?
Yeah, it's a really good question. And actually, Leanne Wittenfeld, our Water Quality Administrator, is part of our CRS program. She's just wrapping up a repetitive loss area analysis for the whole city. So it's anywhere where we've seen property owners who have federally-backed flood insurance and have had multiple floods or damage on their property. We can look at those overall areas and then what steps are available. So, yeah, there's definitely a wide range of things that a homeowner could do. Some of them could be as simple as just elevating exterior mechanical equipment and, you know, electrical systems just so if there is a flood, at least some of those more expensive things aren't damaged. And then in some instances, there's, you know, also, you know, understanding a little better now where these repetitive loss areas are now. Maybe that weights into how we rank our CIP projects. So if it, you know, we have a CIP project that maybe fixes drainage on a street, but could also fix, you know, help, work in one of these repetitive loss areas that maybe bumped that up on our priority. So, yeah, definitely something we're looking at. And I think, yeah, we're kind of working at it into the neighborhood plans to make a lot of sense.
And I think to, to add what Ian's saying is, you know, the city for some years has had a concentrated effort to actually mitigate those areas that are in the, the worst areas, the 100-year flood pronaries, by purchasing those properties through the FEMA programs and buying those out and removing folks from that. So most of the neighborhood flooding that occurs falls more into the category of kind of nuisance flooding in that it's a, it's a road closure for a period of time. It may be a yard that's flooded. It does indeed sometimes in certain events, might get into a basement, those, those types of things. But nothing on the scale of what you would see in downtown in terms of the, the scope of the flooding. And again, that's because the approach has been to remove those properties from harm's way, whether they be commercial or, or residential. And also to keep new building from going into those areas. So that's why, of course, we regulate the floodplain and the floodway to keep structures out of those areas. So, you know, there's probably some, some smaller-scale things that could be done to address those nuisances on individual properties. But it really will be, as Ian said, kind of those public works things, whether they be street improvements, stormwater improvements, that'll deal with those nuisance, the larger nuisance issues.
My last question is really probably more for Bob. But is there a way, I'm kind of on something like this, an on-the-ground person. It helps me to see it and, and where the impacts are. Would there be an opportunity for council members who are interested to kind of do an on-the-ground tour of the things that you described, the projects you described downtown?
Sure. I think we can arrange to, to show some of those locations where those would be. You probably don't want to crawl in the tunnels like Marcus had to do, but...
I'm, I'm up for that.
But yeah, I think we can definitely make it, make some opportunities. So you could see physically where some of these improvements and some of these projects would go and get a sense of, back to your earlier question, which is, what would the impact during construction likely need to be as we, as we move into those phases? And again, I'll stress what Ian said too, is as these move into real projects, not just concepts, then of course, that's when our engagement process will kick in and we'll start interacting with, as mentioned, with Downtown Roanoke. We'll start mentioning with the business owners and the building owners and so on and, and working with them. But you're not going to do these projects without disruption. I mean, that, that's just a given in, in light of the scale and the scope of what they are. But yeah, we certainly can, can work to arrange that.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Moon, no?
Thank you. I'm like, Jill, I don't know what you just said. I'm an average person and for the citizens who approach me, I just have a couple of questions. And that is going to be related to lick run. I know you talked about downtown and the water flowing downtown. And you did mention something of lick run, which is in the Washington Park area. And like most of us up here have gotten several complaints with regards to what is going on with Washington Park. with regards to what is going on with Washington Park. And since we're having this briefing, I would like to take this opportunity for you to talk about what is going on with Washington Park as far as the restoration to help slow down the water flowing downtown. Some look at it as to, just as I do, overgrowth, out of control. And I do know back in the 80s, early 90s, there was a project done where they did a culvert, and they rerouted the creek trying to do the, for the flooding. And then they did it again and kind of, I think, download down the water so that it ran over. Washington Park is always flooded. But now I understand, I had an opportunity to meet with the Assistant City Manager and Deputy to go over there. And I understand this under the Corps of Engineers who recommended certain things be done for wetlands. So if you don't mind, could you explain what effect that has on the flooding that's downtown?
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus. I think, you know, what we've done in Washington Park is really more of a water quality project. And it does open up the flood plain a little bit in Washington Park. But we're talking about some of these bigger flood events in downtown. The Washington Park work is really more of a water quality, improving the quality of the water flowing along Lake Run as it goes through the park as opposed to really being a flood mitigation project. So for these bigger flood events, you know, the Washington Park wouldn't really... I mean, it would help a little bit, but it wouldn't have a substantial or really significant impact on what's happening in downtown from a flood perspective.
Because we were told that it did. And that's why I'm bringing it that even though it's water quality, it was because of the flooding.
Well, it certainly helps, yeah. It did open up the flood plain a little bit. But I mean, just you've got to look at, you know, the size of Washington Park versus, you know, the size of downtown. It is a relatively, you know, if we had another big storm like we had, well... I mean, yeah, I mean, as we saw back in August, you know, the water, you know, the stream restoration project was done. We had a pretty big rainfall event. We still had flooding downtown. So I mean, it's not going to solve the problem of, I mean, you know, kind of like with stormwater, every single drop in the bucket, you know, eventually the bucket overflows. Every drop you take back out, you avoid a flood. So I mean, it certainly helps in that sense, yeah.
So it answers, it was more of a water quality project?
The benefit is definitely more on the quality side than the flooding side. Not that, but it certainly, it's going to help a little bit when it comes to flooding, yeah.
Okay. Now, with regards to the one for Trout Run coming from Villa Heights going up under Melrose, under the parking lot. Is that the same thing? Is that a water quality where Horton Creek is at that you all will be working on? That's a water quality and not a flood issue?
Yeah, and we're looking at that area. We're looking at both. Because we do have some flood-prone properties on the north side of Melrose. So we're looking at how do we address flooding there? You know, we've got some undersized pipes coming underneath Melrose Avenue, which is contributing to that. And then, yeah, and then that section, you know, Kiwanis is looking at between Melrose Avenue and the Goodwill campus. Yeah, there's an opportunity to do... And that can be a little bit of both. I mean, if we, you know, help build back up a good, nice riparian buffer, that definitely helps from a water quality perspective. But if we can open up the flood channel, that can help a little bit with, you know, kind of how much water, can we store a little bit of water between Melrose and Goodwill, which maybe helps? It's not going to have a huge reduction on flooding. But again, it gets back to every little bit helps. So I mean, I think it's got some benefit from flooding as well. But right now, Marcus is actually kind of going back and doing the more detailed modeling we did for downtown. He's doing that for the Horton's branch right now. So I think that, once we go through that modeling, that'll give us a lot better idea of the exact benefits that we could see from that project. But again, that's more of a, at least from a stormwater perspective, really more as water quality. And I think it's a really nice opportunity for the public outreach and environmental education. I think those are the two factors from stormwater's interest in it, is the quality and the opportunity to do some nice outreach work in that part of the city.
So with regards to both of those, will there be some community engagement when you start working in the Horton Creek area to at least engage the community in what's going on? When, do you have a timeframe as to when you will be doing that project?
Yes, if we did the whole project, it's one of the ones that also has VDOT revenue sharing with it. And I believe that's a FY '25, so July of 2024 is when that money would become available from VDOT. So that would be, you know, our timeframe. We certainly do a lot of design work ahead of time. And I think, you know, we would work with, you know, both the Kiwanis Club on any kind of outreach in the park itself and then any of the upstream work we would do. We definitely work with the neighbors, and that's something that we would do. I think a lot of it probably depends on the time with Kiwanis too. Because that's, you know, we definitely could accelerate things on our end. But yeah, in the years leading up, that's when we get into our detailed design work, work with the community about what that's exactly going to look like and make sure we come up with a good project that addresses upstream flooding issues, you know, the water quality on Horton's branch in Melrose. Well, I can't remember what the name of the park is. But yeah, Forest Park Elementary and the Forest Park School now. And, yeah, just, you know, kind of all those elements and make sure that comes together well, definitely.
So within about two to three years, you're saying, pretty much? But preliminary work would be done in the interim before that?
Right, right.
Okay. And again, community, we'll have some community engagement to at least let them know what's going on in their neighborhood.
Correct, yes, yes, definitely, yeah. Don't want to be surprised. So yeah, nobody wants surprises when it comes to the big projects, yeah.
Exactly, thank you.
Thanks again, Ian and Marcus. I just have a few quick questions, and I'll try to make them brief. You talked about six projects, and you went over three of the recommended projects. And I don't think Ms. Moon Reynolds is way off. We all have to unpack what you said and try to understand it. You see these reports, and you've probably met with Mr. Cobb I don't know how many times. But when you start working on the individual projects, will you come back to us and explain how each of these projects are going to work? Because you basically just gave us an overview. And if you are not in stormwater or mitigation, you certainly would not understand that. And that's not you, that's probably any average... Yeah, that's any average person. And so people would like to understand, in particular, the property owners and the tenants downtown and throughout the city. So when you're working on these projects, it sounds like you've been communicating with the property owners and the tenants. And I don't know how you're doing that. Can you tell me how you're doing that? Or are you giving them the same sort of briefing? Are you more explicit with them, maybe helpful as far as understanding? I just want to make sure that the residents and the property owners downtown understand that we are making huge strides and some really big efforts to try to mitigate the flooding. But I'm just wondering about your engagement with them. Are they a part of the process? Or you'll come back to them after you figure out what exactly is going to be done or how the projects are going to work?
Yeah, so at this point, we've really just briefed Downtown Roanoke, Inc. on the projects we're looking at. And I think like Bob was saying, that, you know, once we kind of get them formulated a bit more, then that's when we can really have some more conversation about more stuff, about timeframes. You know, there's certain times of year that are better than others from a business perspective. But yeah, I think as we get into these a little bit more, then, yeah, we would definitely look to have some of those more conversations with Downtown Roanoke and the stakeholders in those particular project areas.
It also depends on the individual project. So for example, if you look at the conveyance projects like the, you know, the L-pipe piece of it, I mean, that is predominantly an engineering project. I mean, almost everything that goes into it is engineering work. And so the discussion would really be those items that Ian just mentioned, which is working around kind of the timing, make sure that everyone knows the impact. We would look at the detour routes, all those kinds of things. That's the conversation we would have with the, both DRI plus with the adjacent property owners and other downtown businesses and so on. If you transition to the Green Street project, the green improvements in that area, that incorporates both engineering, but also starts now, it's above ground, starts to get a little more impact about what the vegetation might look like and how all that gets worked out because it's in front of people's homes and businesses. So that would require a different level of engagement that is going to be probably a little bit slower and a little bit more direct or hands-on, maybe even in those instances, since you really are in a discreet area, maybe engaging or trying to engage with the individual as you work versus through something like DRI or something along those lines. So it really will depend on those projects. We, it would be unlikely, other than issues around land acquisition, which some of these would require issues around, certainly funding, which obviously is not resolved to be able to even implement these projects, and on some kind of periodic basis, whether that's annual or something. Most of these projects would not come back individually to the council except for those purposes. What we would likely do is, much like we do with street paving projects, is we would continue to keep you updated as these progress through the weekly updates and those other kinds of mechanisms. That's separate and apart from what we're doing with the community. You, of course, would be aware of there were community meetings, those types of things.
So did I hear you say they would not come back, the projects? Because that's what, in my mind, I'm thinking they'll come back and explain how they will work and how they will help mitigate. So basically, they would just come back and let us know what the progress is once they devise those...
Correct. The exceptions would be things like that we would require land acquisition. We would need to have further conversations with you all about those as well. And again, funding, because we still have to resolve with your help how we're going to actually fund these projects. As Marcus has mentioned, you know, we've got, when you add it all together, you know, it's like $300 million worth of projects. And we get $3 to $5 million a year right now out of the revenue associated with the utility to go to capital projects. That's not going to work. These projects will not get done with that revenue stream. So we have to have more discussions. So those policy discussions will be the ones we have with you all. Maybe even some of the, some of the timing associated with these. These right now are our, these are the projects we know we can do right now with the funding that we have. There may need to be some additional policy discussions with you all that if we could identify another source of funding, whatever that might be, where is that energy best placed? And those are the conversations we'll have with you.
Yeah, I know you, Mr. Cobb, you always remind me, you know, you do policy, we'll do the implementation. But I still want to know, how is it going to be done? So with that being said, you mentioned the hydraulic model. So I guess I don't need to get into details about that. But is that like a simulation or a computer test or something like that? Yes?
It is, yes, ma'am. And I apologize if I was opaque in the way I described your thing. Yes, basically, it's just on the computer.
Oh, okay.
You simulate the tunnel system and the watershed in a computer model, and you run it and put rainfall into it, and water comes out.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm saying. I'm only familiar with some sort of simulation.